Good morning, everyone. I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chair of the Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. We're here, we're meeting today to discuss Council Resolution 21-0022R, Assisting Baltimore City Artists for the Purpose of Calling on Administration If the City Received Additional COVID-19 Relief Funds from United States Congress To Invest at Least $1 Million of Those Funds to Establish An Emergency Fund to Assist the Baltimore City Artists. I'd like to recognize the committee members that are part of this education workforce. I see Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance from the Seventh District. Councilman Torrance. Okay. Also, the sponsor of this bill is Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the Third District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nikki Thompson from Council President Mosby's office also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I see. Sorry, I'm starting a little slow here. Oh, okay, Councilman Torrance is here, okay. Before I start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly, and after you've finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are asked to speak again. Councilman Ryan Dorsey is the sponsor of this resolution, and he'll give some open remarks. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee, to all the agencies who have reported on this and have, are here today to represent through staff. I want to thank all of the people who have submitted their written testimony in support of this. And I want to thank you especially, Mr. Chair, for advancing this hearing to allow this to be heard with the urgency that I believe is necessary as we are now going to be seeing money coming from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act. As you stated, Mr. Chair, in your introductory reading, this bill is a resolution to request at least $1 million be allocated directly to support artists in Baltimore City. And if I may, I'm going to read just a little bit from the recitals of the resolution because I think it sums it up well. The Baltimore City Council recognizes the significant contributions of artists in the city and their direct impact on economic vitality, community investment, and tourism attraction. Artists make up an integral part of Baltimore's cultural heritage and are a vital part of its national identity. Independent artists make up a unique part of the city's workforce, many being self-employed and freelance workers. Due to these distinctions, many of the individuals that make up the artist's workforce have gone without regular or pandemic unemployment assistance. Without this critical provision, artists have gone without traditional government assistance during a national health and economic crisis. The purpose of this resolution is to request that the mayor's office provide critical emergency economic relief for Baltimore City's artists who have suffered undue hardships caused by the health and safety closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic. With the American Rescue Plan Act, Maryland will receive $600 million in direct funding, not including additional money for schools, MTA, vaccine distribution, and behavioral health. $1 million of this is an entirely reasonable and worthwhile investment to support artists who are not merely the economic drivers upon whom so many others rely, but the indispensable keepers of our shared humanity, without whom we might hardly know who we are as individuals or as a collective. COVID-19 has had a disproportionate effect on Black, Indigenous, and people of color, both in terms of economic hardships and healthcare. This pandemic has negatively affected arts communities of color and further stifled their creativity and investment opportunities. The council, it is my hope with this resolution, will request that any emergency artist fund specifically address and invest in BIPOC artists in Baltimore, and that funds should be granted directly to individual artists. I appreciate, again, Mr. Chair, calling the hearing today, and I look forward to all of the public testimony and the agency reports here today and the discussion that may ensue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm gonna go with agency reports first. So the Law Department, I know Ms. Hillary Rulie, Law Department favorable comments. Ms. Rulie, do you have any additional comments?
No, Mr. Chair, we stand by that this report can, this resolution can be approved for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. What about the Baltimore Development Corporation? Anybody? EDC on the call? Okay, they have favorable reports also. The Fire Department, anybody from the Fire Department? Okay, I don't know that one's on here. The Department of Finance, anybody here from the Department of Finance?
Hi, yes, this is Bob Sedemy, Budget Director, representing Department of Finance. We stand by our report, and we're happy to answer any questions as they arise during the hearing.
Thank you. The Mayor's Office of Employment Development, is anybody here?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Mackenzie Garvin from MOED. We provided our written testimony, and we stand by our report. We are in full support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts?
Yes, good morning. I'm here, and I do have a statement I'd like to read. Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Director of the Arts Council for Baltimore City. The Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts is the designated Arts Council for the city, and we provide resources in the form of funding, technical support, and programming to local artists and arts and culture organizations within Baltimore City. Last year, we provided funding and technical support to more than 500 individual artists through programming opportunities granting technical support opportunities. When the pandemic hit last March, industries were paralyzed, and tragic personal and professional loss was at an all-time high. With venues closed and virtually the entire city shut down, the devastation caused by the pandemic within the arts sector was palpable. However, the arts community came together in a major way to show support for their own. In April, we served as the fiduciary agents for the Baltimore Artist Emergency Relief Fund, a coalition-led initiative that was designed to provide direct assistance to Baltimore-based artists and creative entrepreneurs who lost income due to the COVID-19 crisis. This coalition was organized by Maggie Vajegas, Executive Director of Beacon, and inspired by early emergency fund creators like artist and cultural worker Alana Nicole Davis. The Arts Council served as the fiduciary agents of the fund and provided the initial seed of $20,000 with the support of the Maryland State Arts Council. Ultimately, a combined total of $161,000 was raised for the Emergency Relief Fund from individual and philanthropic donors. Out of the 644 artists who applied, we were able to award 322 artists $500 mini grants within a three-month period. More than half of the individuals who applied identified as persons of color and grant recipients used the funds for a range of things, ranging from food security to childcare needs, medication, and loss of revenue. Although this was a great step in serving artists in an emergency situation and a great show of support and support from the arts community, we believe there is an opportunity to do more. Through our work and connection to artists and communities, we know that independent artists continue to struggle as a result of this pandemic. The combined request for funding of all applicants who applied was over $3.3 million, and the total amount requested from all the grant recipients combined was nearly $1.6 million. The Baltimore Artist Emergency Relief Fund was only a snapshot that captured the perpetual need of independent artists and creatives in this city. As venues and restaurants slowly reopen and restrictions are eased, the livelihoods of thousands are still very much so in jeopardy. This resolution calls on this administration if it receives future COVID-19 relief funds from Congress to invest a minimum of $1 million to establish an emergency fund to assist Baltimore City artists. BOPA is in full support of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe I see Leah here from the Mayor's Office of Children and Families. Ms. Leah, do you have any comments?
No, we took no position on this bill and defer to the Department of Finance.
Okay. Also, I see Councilman Cohen, who is a member of the committee from the First District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we get started, do any of the committee members have any comments for the agency reports? Okay, the committee has received several written testimonies on behalf of the artists and copies are filed. I would like for Councilman Dorsey, who has a panel, that like to make some comments and statements, and I'll hand this over to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just been texting with a couple of folks. Councilwoman Middleton, who's a member of the committee, seems to need somebody to email her the link for the hearing again. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And then we do have a panel of three people who I've asked to be given a little extra time here, and I appreciate you, Mr. Chair, accommodating them. They are all on here as attendees, so if we could also elevate them to panelist or presenter status, that would be great. Nicholas Cohen, Alana Nicole Davis, who was just mentioned a moment ago, and EZ Jackson, and I'd be thankful if we could have them speak in that order. I want to give my great thanks to Nicholas for his integral part in bringing this hearing forth today. He prompted me to hold this hearing and put forth this idea, and so I just want to really thank him for his indispensable contribution to supporting this idea. Thank you. Nicholas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, and again, thank you to the chair and all the honorable members of the committee for taking the time to hear this resolution being put to the floor. Just a brief statement, so I'll kind of talk through that, and I'm happy to, as this goes on, take any questions. So again, my name's Nicholas Cohen. I'm the Executive Director of Maryland Citizens for the Arts. We serve as a nonprofit organization that helps advance public policy and legislation for the arts for the state of Maryland. We are also housed at the Motor House in Station North in the Arts and Entertainment District, and I'm a longtime city resident residing in Madison Park. So this is truly, and I'm also a freelance musician, so this is very dear to my heart, this resolution. So first, I want to recognize that the arts in Baltimore City are the very heart and soul of the Maryland arts sector. Per the Maryland Department of Commerce, the entire sector boasts over $1 billion in economic activity across the state. This impact is led in large part by the work and sweat equity invested by artists in Baltimore. Simply put, this amount would not be this large were it not for their incredible work. Much as the hospitality and restaurant sectors have been suffering massive losses due to COVID-19, artists have also been financially decimated across the city due to the closures of almost all arts-related activities since March of last year. The economic challenges suffered from this once-in-a-generation pandemic have been significant and widespread. The arts industry has never before seen such a massive economic decline, and this specific downturn within the arts sector is significantly more extensive and more devastating than the Great Recession of 2008. And even further, many artists are classified as mixed-income earners or basically freelancers, so those who get 1099s and W2s. So they've actually experienced great difficulty accessing pandemic aid over the past year, whether it be through unemployment or other means. Additionally, recent economic studies have shown hundreds of millions in losses for the Maryland arts sector. And while we have seen large amounts of economic relief, both from the state and the city paid towards businesses in the city, very little has gone to support the creative economy. And I know, I want to recognize that BOPA was, did a great job in April getting an artist relief grant to 500 artists, but that was a long time ago. We are deep, deep into the pandemic. So I ask the council, much as we look to support the business entrepreneur in the city, so too must be support and uplift our creative ones. With the welcome news of the passage of the American Relief Act, Baltimore City Government stands to receive around $660 million in COVID relief funds. While the city has many pressing needs, contributing a portion of this towards our incredible artists in the city would be both impactful and truly past due. And so it's with that, I really ask and respectfully ask the committee to support this resolution and help to uplift our artists and continue them to be successful throughout the recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Alana?
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Alana Nicole. I was mentioned by a little bit earlier. I'm an artist in Baltimore City. I'm 29 years old. I'm a mother of two. I live right here in the Runnington neighborhood of Baltimore City. I'm a candidate for my Masters in Social Design at MICA, Maryland Institute College of Art, set to graduate in May. So very excited about that and happy to be here. Thank you, everybody, for having me, everyone under the sound of my voice. Last March of 2020 was a very harrowing time for artists in Baltimore. The onset of the COVID-19 pandemic shook an already loose infrastructure of ever-absent and always-late support systems for many artists in the city. It is still a harrowing time. Performance, visual, literary, and multidisciplinary artists and the likes typically rely on venue bookings, artist fairs, festivals, and vendor experiences to make money to support ourselves and our families. Much of that, no, forgive me, all of that ceased. None of us were prepared. Artists are the cornerstone to how this city turns week to week, even minute to minute. The sounds of Abu the Flute Maker on Sundays at the farmer's market underneath the JFX, the bucket drummer usually affixed close to the aquarium, ghosty, a young Baltimore rapper who had to start a GoFundMe after, and I quote, "being Black homeless artists in dire need of a home." His partner in life is expecting. His GoFundMe, among many others I've seen, sewn onto my timeline on social media since the start of this pandemic has been met by the members of this artist community despite the financial deficit that we continually work from. We've turned to each other, just like early mutual aid funds that dedicated cultural workers like myself, Abu, Abdul Ali, and Serena Christmas all started at the beginning of this unexpected time in this world. We are exhausted by this world's commitment to not seeing artists as the mothers, fathers, cousins, friends, and humans that we are. Our needs deserve to be met. We are worthy of this council investing at least $1 million, if not more of those funds, to establish an emergency fund to assist Baltimore City artists. And when I say Baltimore City artists, I don't just mean white or understood. I mean Black, queer, non-traditional, risque, obscure, in the shadows, not well-known, housing insecure. Baltimore City artists should be involved in the dispersment of those funds for equity purposes. Traditionally, we would not ask for help. We would just do amongst ourselves as we do. These are not traditional times, and this is not, and this is my untraditional plea for you all to provide critical emergency economic relief for Baltimore City's artists who have suffered undue hardships caused by the health and safety closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And again, I thank you for listening to me and thanks for having me this morning. Thanks, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Alana, and thank you so much for your mention of the very dear Abu the Flute Maker, who so many in Baltimore know and recognize. Allen Street, it's amazing to see him. My dear brother Ezekiel Jackson.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Stokes, and all the members of the panel. My name is EZ Jackson. I have been an active member of Baltimore arts community for about 15 years now. I'm currently the founder and CEO of Epic Fam, which is a record label and entertainment media company that we established in January of 2020. We officially were incorporated in January of 2020 with a host of plans to provide platforms for artists, to provide studio time, to book shows, and even a festival, a new festival that would give artists who weren't usually picked or called for big events like Light City and Artscape to be able to perform and, you know, show their talent. I'm very excited that the council is considering this bill. Not only did my company take a huge hit last year after officially incorporating in January and then having to stop everything in March, but I personally was impacted, this being one of the first years that I had a sustainable show schedule with two tours booked last year that were canceled and a host of performances and appearances that, you know, I may never get back. And a lot of artists were already struggling to sustain themselves in the city. I want to thank Alana Nicole, who had immediately started a fund to help artists. I want to thank Ms. Downs, who spoke earlier, and what BOPA did last year was awesome. Also, I want to mention Creative Alliance, who during the summer created sidewalk serenades and gave us an opportunity to do socially-distanced performances in front of residents' homes around the city, and that helped a great deal of us for a little bit. But of course, as others have said, there's still a lot more work to do. I would just want to close with one important thing that I want folks to keep in mind. In the artist community, a lot of folks in Baltimore are leaving and considering leaving because there is a lack of support for artists here. We are trying, and I see a great improvement over the years, but still, artists are looking outside and seeing other cities that have infrastructures that do not hesitate to support their artists. So I would just encourage everybody to consider that, and I thank you all for taking the time to do this work today.
Thank you so much, EZ. I just, I want to lift up what you said. You know, you mentioned the Creative Alliance, and there's so many that have worked so creatively to try to create new opportunities within the constraints created by this pandemic. The first folks that come to mind is the Hot Sauce Artist Collective with their outdoor gallery series, just really an amazing exhibition series, a young Black people of color. And I just want to thank you for your testimony here today and for hitting on that very important point that people have been leaving Baltimore for years to seek better artistic career opportunity. This is not a new thing, but it is one of these things that has been worsened by this pandemic and has led to even more people seeking opportunity to go elsewhere where they have, where they feel they can find greater support. And I really think that that speaks to the urgency of the need for direct artist relief to the greatest extent possible. Mr. Chair, I want to thank you, and again, there's a lot of people here to give their own public testimony today, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we start, I want to just, for those who signed in using the computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Before we start, I would like for Mr. John Tyler, an artist and founder of Love Grove Music Festival, who will be doing a short video. Mr. Tyler is all yours.
Thank you. Are we able to play the video?
Yeah, apologies. I'll pull him up right now.
Yes, we'll be able to play it. Also, before you start, I'd like to recognize Matt Stegman from President Mosby's office, Nina Themnas from Mayor Scott's office also.
I don't know, I can't hear the volume.
Hold on, we checking now. It was a few seconds, we working on it. Mr. Stegman, are we able to get the volume for the video?
I mean, that's okay. I could just, I could talk about it. But hello, everyone. My name is John Tyler. I'm a 21-year-old artist and founder of the Love Grove Music Festival. The video you just saw, I know you couldn't hear it, but basically, it's a video, we just had a all-women's virtual music festival to raise money for women artists affected by COVID and the Johns Hopkins Breast Cancer Avon Foundation. And we shot a video back in January about why it's important for the city and other businesses around the city to support the arts. Growing up in Baltimore, it's been hard as an artist to find any opportunities to express myself, yet alone to make money. So when COVID hit, pretty much all the little opportunities we had just disappeared. And me personally, I lost my job. I have not worked since. I barely get any freelance gigs, and it's just very important, and I mean very important for everyone to really support the arts and for us to get this money. And I just want to thank everyone for making this project happen, and we really need the money, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the problem with the sound. Also, I want to recognize Councilwoman Middleton, who's a member of this committee, who's having some issues getting on. So before we start, next I will go through all the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called and cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the committee staff person, one by one, who is Margaret Kern. You will hear two beats when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of the testimony. If a caller does not want to If a caller does not want to provide testimony, then simply, they simply need to say they don't want to provide the testimony after two beats. If the speaker's inaudible, then we will direct you to call back. So, Ms. Marguerite, you want to start without first?
Mr. Chair?
Go.
Yeah, this is Matt Stegman again. So I think I may have figured out the audio issue if we have, the video is literally one minute. If we could try it one more time?
Yeah, let's go back.
Thank you. If it doesn't work, then I apologize to Mr. Tyler, but we'll try it one more time.
Tyler, we going to give this, hand this back over to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, so nobody else is hearing it?
No, we can't hear it.
All right. Well, my apologies. I have been hearing it. It's a, it's a great video. So thank you, Mr. Tyler, and I apologize that, for the technological issue.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Ms. Kern, you can start without first on raise hand function.
Okay. Our first speaker is Adam, last name spelled H-O-L-O-F-C-E-N-E-R.
Thank you, members of the committee. My name is Adam Holof Center. I am an artist, an attorney, a law professor, the executive director of Maryland's Volunteer Lawyers for the Arts, as well as a member of the Arts and Culture Committee for the mayor's transition team. And I really appreciate what everyone said, and I want to give a little bit of perspective in terms of the work that I do representing artists and cultural creators throughout the city of Baltimore on a day-in, day-out basis to really lift up what all the speakers, Alana Nicholas and EZ have said so far. So at the beginning of this crisis, our organization, Maryland Volunteer Lawyers for the Arts, which provides pro bono legal assistance to Baltimore-based artists, we stalled a 50% increase in the number of legal intakes that we're doing almost immediately. And we are an organization that does intakes generally pre-pandemic for about 300 artists a year. So we're going to be topping the 400-plus mark for this year, and these are artists who immediately we're seeing contracts that they have difficulty fulfilling. Excuse me?
Yes, Councilman Glover's here.
Okay. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened.
Oh, that's okay. So this increase, which we saw immediately, which has not abated whatsoever, had to do immediately with that crisis that everyone's described. And we sit sort of in between artists and their business ventures, which have legal implications, and the losses that they suffered had extreme legal implications in terms of, you know, an inability to pay rent for studio and performance spaces, an inability to comply with contracts for performance and other exhibition obligations that they had. And so we had to triage all those situations, which were extremely difficult. The reason that our numbers have continued at this increased level is that artists being the venturous entrepreneurial folks that they are have now had to pivot so many of their businesses, create new LLCs, create new contracts, create new protection vehicles and mechanisms in order to conduct their work. So they've had to do double duty, as well as having a loss of resources. The other thing that we've seen, and which has always been a part of our business, is that the work that artists do sometimes has difficulty factoring into the legal systems, business entities, and other types of formal business affairs that general business folks are used to. And what I mean is, as I think Nicholas mentioned, the fact that many artists are both W-2 and 1099 employees, so you might have a part-time gig at a restaurant being a W-2 employee two days a week, but the rest of your income is generated from 1099 independent contract work. There was a critical flaw in the original relief bill that actually limited the amount of unemployment insurance benefits you could receive to just that of your W-2 employment. So if you essentially were piecing together your income as a creative with four days of 1099 work and one to two days of W-2 work, you were only going to receive benefits from that one to two days of W-2 work. So that has been a huge problem. The other thing, as has been mentioned, the artists that are working in their various ways and potentially without access to traditional banking and other types of professional services, their lack of access to PPP and other support grants has been extreme. Therefore, this type of relief, which the committee is hearing in regards to this resolution, is absolutely critical so that we can bridge the gap to the, essentially, you know, the lifeblood of not just our creative and cultural sector here, but our economic sector as well. And so if there are any questions, I'm happy to speak more on our work, but thank you again for the time this morning.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Middleton from the 6th District, a member of this committee, and Councilman Glover, a member of the committee from the 13th District. Ms. Marguerite, our next hand raised.
The next speaker is Camille Khashaka.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Camille Khashaka, and I'm the executive director at Motor House and Art Hub here in Baltimore. And a few people who have already spoken on this call, they work out of the Motor House, so I think that's very reflective of the type of space that we are. I'm asking for your support of this resolution, which establishes at least a million dollars emergency fund for artists in Baltimore. And it's imperative that the city earmarks these funds specifically for artists. These are residents who are typically, like everyone has said before me, typically independent contractors who have, in many cases, been ineligible to receive unemployment benefits or have been unable to navigate a crowded unemployment system. They also are the people who are particularly affected by the pandemic as their work is generally dependent on viewership. They're not always able to pivot to a digital format. Their work might not even translate digitally because, but their work is important nonetheless. We've seen that artists have saved us during this pandemic. They've given us language for our feelings, and they've given us respite from them as well. We must make them a priority. At Motor House, we've been blessed with a few emergency funding awards, and we pass those funds on to artists as much as possible. And we've hosted our share of virtual events in order to keep artists working and paid them as much as possible, but our funds are finite. We have been closed since March of last year, so our income has been critically interrupted. However, we know that the people who sustained us pre and will sustain us post-COVID are artists, so we've prioritized finding financial support for them. So I'm asking the city to do the same. Thank you so much, and again, I request a favorable response to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Louise Cardona.
This is Louise Cardona with the Baltimore Development Corporation. I apologize, my mic was not able to be unmuted during the agency reports, but I am representing VDC today, and we do stand in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next, Jessica Solomon.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Councilmembers Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Middleton, and members of the Education Workforce and Youth Committee. My name is Jessica Solomon. I'm a daughter of Baltimore, an arts advocate, a cultural steward, and most recently co-chair of the mayor's Arts and Culture Transition Committee. I support Resolution 21022R, assisting Baltimore City artists. So over a matter of four intense weeks, the mayor's Arts and Culture Transition Committee, some of whom the members are on this call, it's great to see you all. We developed a roadmap for the city's first steps towards interrupting the narrative and practice of undervaluing individual artists. We believe it's time to recognize and invest in artists as critical contributors to the lifeblood of this city and as economic drivers that they are. As you all know, Baltimore has an extraordinary cultural ecosystem that boasts an active emerging art scene in proximity to master artists. A thriving arts and cultural sector is a critical component and driver of any city's health, wellness, and success, and creativity has always been essential to recovery. Baltimore artists are critical and have always been indispensable agents in the city's healing now and pre-COVID-19. I like to think of artists as the salt in the stew. And yet, without safety nets in place in times of crises, artists are often among those most affected. In our city, that impact is compounded. In addition to the health concerns that we all face, Baltimore artists over the last year have had to pivot with limited nominal support, finding ways to turn canceled income and performances into virtual and socially distant opportunities when possible. And we heard examples of that from Alana, EZ, and Nicholas. The Baltimore Office of Promotions in the Arts stewarded the One Time Micro Grant, the Baltimore Artists Emergency Relief Fund, and there have been separate grassroots mutual aid efforts created quickly by beloved artists like Alana Nicole Davis, Sharana Christmas, Abdul Ali, and others that kept to help keep artists afloat, but that is not enough. Prioritizing support for Baltimore artists through this resolution is equity in action. For all the reasons Councilman Dorsey listed in his resolution, this is no different than the COVID-19 support and unique attention and direct funding given to restaurants as a subset of small businesses. The success of many other businesses and cultural institutions relies on the uniqueness of artists as a group that has been impacted by ineligibility for things like unemployment. I urge you to support this resolution, and I thank the committee for the opportunity to speak. I look forward to hearing from my colleagues and friends, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lady Breon.
Good morning. Again, my name is Lady Breon, and I just wanted to take a second and show support for Resolution 21022R. I am a longtime spoken-word artist in Baltimore City. I'm also the cultural curator for Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle. I am the executive director of the Pennsylvania Avenue Black Arts and Entertainment District, and I was also a member of the mayor's Arts and Cultural Transition Committee. And with that being said, you know, over the last year, the Black Arts District, which is Maryland's first arts and entertainment district specifically designed to support, celebrate, and promote Black creatives in the city, we've worked with a number of folks to give emergency funds to artists, including as a partner with BOPA's micro grants. You know, we were passed through for grant funds to artists in the community, and one of the things that we recognized is despite our efforts to try to move funding towards artists in the community, we had asked, there were several times over, the money that we actually had to give out as it related to emergency funds. And so with that being said, I think it's important that we note with what everyone has already said, that there is a dire need in the city for artists to get emergency support during this time, because, you know, I was fortunate enough to still be running the Black Arts District, so I had, you know, W-2 employment. But if it was two years ago, I wouldn't have that safety net. I wouldn't have anything to fall back on, because, again, as a performing artist, our venues, our audiences, they all sort of dried up immediately. And so I'm definitely feeling for all of the artists across Baltimore City who are still struggling to find, you know, arts-based employment, creative-based employment at this time, and navigating systems that should be set up to support them, like unemployment, PPP loans, et cetera, but they are really not set up for the creative community. And so I don't want to belabor this much longer because I agree with the sentiments that have been shared, but I think it's really important for us to recognize how artists really support the health and vitality of our city and make our city attractive, help our city as it relates to tourism and a number of other things. And so if we believe in our arts community, then we certainly should be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Next is our first call-in attendee. I will unmute you, and please state your name first before you speak. Do you wish to say anything? First call-in, Miss User. Okay, I'm going to go to the next one.
Is it?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, this is Jeannie Howe. I am the executive director of the Greater Baltimore Cultural Alliance. We're a regional organization that creates equity and opportunity in, through, and for the arts, and we have submitted written testimony on behalf of our members, our board of directors, and all of the amazing arts community that are here, living and working in Baltimore. Artisan, arts and cultural humanities organizations are essential contributors to the social fabric and human spirit of Baltimore for their contributions to equitable education, economy, and opportunity as problem-solving partners to government and business, and both for their inherent worth and their power to create change. The dignity of a broad, complex spectrum of human creative expression must be recognized and respected and supported. Baltimore is nationally recognized for the richness of its cultural fabric and as a place where artists thrive. As the city moves into recovery and beyond, artists are resourced economically and more. We must support them and encourage them to live and stay and work here. They make an amazing contribution and one that really makes Baltimore a place where we all want to live, work, and do business. Thank you to the committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words.
The next attendee who called in, you will hear two beats. Please state your name before speaking. Thank you. You're the next speaker, next caller. Do you wish to speak? Mr. Chair, that completes all the public testimony at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair?
So?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I saw in the chat Cheyenne Zadia was hoping to speak but couldn't figure out how to use the raise hand function from the phone. I'm also concerned that there may be others who just can't figure out how to use the raise hand function calling in from their phone or whatever. I wonder if we could somehow recognize these folks, and certainly Cheyenne.
Hold on one moment, Council.
I could go down the list, Mr. Chair, if you would like.
Yeah, could you?
But I do see Maggie, Maggie Vellegas, I believe that's how you pronounce your name. Her hand is up, so I'll go to her first.
Good morning. My name is Maggie Vellegas, and I'm the executive director of the Baltimore Creatives Acceleration Network. Thank you so much for hearing me this morning and for proposing this bill and for also being patient with those of us who were having trouble finding the hand feature. So I did submit some written testimony, and I just want to echo a lot of what has been said. The work that we do at BECAND is really providing entrepreneurship support and business development support to artists and creatives across the city, looking to weave together the network of resources that exist in Baltimore and leverage them to uplift our creative community. We, we believe that artists are essential to Baltimore. We know that they're essential to our city and its well-being. Over the last year, and historically, artists have been frontline workers and healers, giving us hope, inspiration, and voice during multiple pandemics. We turn to music, to poetry, to creativity, to raise awareness, to process, to recover, and to reimagine our path forward together. We need artists now more than ever, and right now, they need our support. Artists have been financially devastated by the closures and restrictions resulting from COVID-19, with shuttered venues, canceled tours, performances, exhibitions, and contracts eliminating key means of generating income. Artists are still, one year later, as we've heard this morning, experiencing barriers to accessing unemployment and relief funds through systems that were not designed with them in mind, including PPP and EIDL. I'm a data person, so I can share some data that corroborates this. 95% of artists have experienced loss of income as a result of COVID-19 closures, according to Americans for the Arts. Ninety-five percent of artists have experienced loss of income as a result of COVID-19 closures, according to Americans for the Arts. Over sixty percent have experienced unemployment as a result of the pandemic. Independent Baltimore artists reported losses over three million within the first two months of the pandemic alone, as we discovered through the Baltimore Artists Emergency Relief Fund. And ninety percent of the artists that we surveyed through that fund's research efforts agreed that Baltimore needs to establish an emergency relief fund for artists in the city long-term. While artists like Alana Nicole, Sharina Christmas, and Abdu Ali created mutual aid funds to support each other early on in the pandemic, and many of us came together to advocate and raise and administer the Baltimore Artists Emergency Relief Fund in collaboration with BOPA last spring. The reality is that Baltimore's fractured infrastructure for supporting artists has failed local artists in their time of greatest need. Investing directly in the artists, who, as we can see from the evidence on this call, know best how to support each other, and prioritizing Black, Indigenous, and people of color is critical to the health and vitality of our creative community and the success of the city's recovery. We must demonstrate our commitment to artists as a city to show them that we see the way the social safety nets and the COVID-19 response has failed them, that we hear them when they say they have received little to no relief, that we hear them when they say that the system for supporting them is broken, to show them that we have learned lessons from the inequities perpetuated in the state and federal public health and small business response, and that we will act to prioritize them in our response as a city. How can Baltimore be a cultural beacon without its artists? And who wants to live in a city, or a world for that matter, that doesn't value and show up for its artists? Thank you.
Next, I will go down the list of attendees who have not provided public testimony by their name. Please state whether or not you would wish to testify. Thank you. First is Belle Burr, B-U-R-R. You're unmuted. Belle?
Belle had to step away from the computer. I'm her husband. I can speak, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Ronald Burr. My wife and I are both artists. I'm disabled. My wife is a woman of color. We are we're not part of any major organization, like may have spoken. We're just two artists who are trying to get by. We have a performance troupe. I actually submitted written testimony to Mr. Dorsey. Hopefully, he got that. But we're just two of the artists in Baltimore City who, right now, are struggling to exist both financially and creatively. And we're the kind of artists who we try to tailor our shows to give back. We do, we try to do charity shows, GoFundMe fundraisers for other artists in need. And there's so much of that right now that any ability that we would have to to feel a slight even release of pressure would be, would have a mushroom effect because just a slight relieving of pressure allows us to to get back into the sphere as the pandemic is winding down, as we're hopefully getting to the end of this, and being able to be creative again without feeling this weight that's been on our shoulders for the last year plus. So I do appreciate, as everyone said, this resolution, and I'm prayerful that it will go through. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, Bob Safar. Bob?
Sad, thank you.
Next, Brian Wins.
I don't have any additional testimony at this time. Thank you.
Next will be Cheyenne Zadia.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Cheyenne Zadia. I'm a curator and artist, born and raised in Baltimore. I also created the Alpha Female Festival and many other things. And I recently did a local tour to bring music back to the city during the closing of venues, thanks to the Creative Alliance. I support this resolution as a DIY curator who has been providing platforms for my hard-earned money as a performing arts teacher and being laid off due to the closing of schools and still somehow managing to provide relief for myself and my peers through creative platforms. And I think that, you know, that's kind of what we as artists in Baltimore do. We show up for each other and we make sure we each other are good. For example, Alana Nicole and Abdu Ali and many other artists who have stepped up. And I think it's time that the city, you know, chimes in on that. I'll close by saying, if you all understand the impact of the artists on Baltimore City moving forward with this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Next is Chris Brooks. Chris Brooks?
I support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elliot Kosner? Cashner? Elliot? Jamal Simpson? Mr. Simpson? Do you have anything you wish to say at this time? Okay.
Right.
Carrie Hollahan?
Yeah, I am going to look through the council rules and see about that, and then if I can't find it, then I'll call somebody.
Kirk Shannon?
I support this.
Okay, thank you. Laura Henry?
Good morning. As a city resident, as is, can you hear me? Okay. As a city resident and an employee at BOPA, I completely support this bill.
All right, no problem. I was going to say, I still haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Somebody need to mute themselves, please.
Yeah.
Jamal, I think it's.
Right.
Thank you. I hope everyone heard me.
If you want to repeat it real quick, Laura, that's fine.
Oh, no worries. I was just saying, as a city resident, as an employee of Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts, I completely support this bill.
Thank you.
Next, we have S. Rashid.
As a Baltimore City resident, I'm president of the Black Arts District and artist, I support this bill.
Okay. Sarah Gibson? Gibbons?
Hi, thank you. Also, as a resident of the city and a longtime supporter of music and arts education, especially for young people, I fully support this bill. Thank you.
I believe that's the last speaker, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I also want to recognize, I did mention Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District. She's absent. She hit a prior commitment. I just wanted for that to go on the record. I guess we're going to now go to some of the members of this committee, and I'm going to start off, whoever have questions, I'm going to start off with Councilwoman Middleton from the 6th District.
Councilwoman Middleton? Okay, we will come back to her. Councilwoman Bullock, do you have any questions?
I'm sorry.
No questions, but again, support the effort. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Councilwoman Middleton?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I've been having some technical difficulties today, but I'm here. And
Any questions?
Just a quick comment. So I was able to definitely listen to all of this testimony and you know, a number of the people that did testify, I Ms. Jenny Howe is definitely a strong community person, also in my community. Lady Briann is definitely a strong person that I have worked with and we have helped each other. And just, I am in total support of this bill and hoping that we can move it through quickly. The art, artist industry is just a very important part of our city. And again, I'm in total support of all of the testimony that has been given today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Glava, you have any questions?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
Comments?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that I agree with, you know, Councilwoman Middleton that the arts are very, very important to us. As you know, Councilman, I'm an artist. I'm very involved in arts in Baltimore, and I fully support, you know, this bill, and I hope that we can kind of rush it to get it through.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance, you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I actually have comments and one question. First, my comment is I agree with the sentiments of this bill, but also I want to make sure that I want to tell the artists, especially those who are in my district where I'm helping right now, is that we hear you. We understand that there are dire straits economically for you. And then my question to the panel and Councilman Dorsey is how have we thought about how can this be available to most artists? Because when I think about the mixed income of W-2 versus $10.99, how do we make sure that we get the aid to those who are in dire need, but also in a equitable way?
I don't want to necessarily jump straight in, assuming that I know exactly how that should happen. So if anybody has any other, anybody from the panel, or I would also say from BOPA, because I, you know, my sense is that they've done a really wonderful job with what they did early on in the pandemic and the funds that were available then. And my assumption is that they would be the administrator and director of how this would play out. So I would defer to any of our panelists who might care to speak to this, as well as to BOPA.
This is Alana. I was really going to quickly just kind of hear what Councilman Dorsey said about BOPA or Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts, serving as like a fiduciary agent for funds that might have been accrued, like from this $1 million. They did an amazing job, and I was a part of that effort for the Baltimore Artists Relief Fund early in the year, last year after my independent fund. And so even just the inclusion of someone like myself, as well as other artists in the future, to be able to administer those funds quickly and with as much thought as possible, especially regarding it getting to like Black and Brown folks and folks who might not be as seen as the usual, and that's it.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, oh, if I can, just to say
Go ahead, sir.
That we've seen success, I guess, from state relief for the arts. The least strings attached is the best way to get things out quickly, saying like, don't overproduce questions and make it too burdensome for the folks asking for aid. Now's not the time for that. The folks that need aid need it fast. And I'll acknowledge too, I think BOPA, along with the Coalition, did a great job in the early parts of the pandemic before we really knew truly, truly how devastating things were. They got money out pretty fast. So I think there's definitely a tried and true way to do this. I'd also ask that if hopefully this money gets out there, the city use their full force of getting the word out that money exists to communities that don't always hear that there's money there. So that's twofold, making sure to use your full marketing muscle from the city, and then don't make it too restrictive in how long the timing has to be. So don't don't put a cap on and say it has to be spent in a month or something like that. If you make the application process too short, it's going to cut out people. So that's just what I'm seeing from the state and success there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that, I was going to speak on behalf of BOPA as well.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, Alana. As you know, we did the Emergency Relief Fund, and that was more of a collaborative effort, and we did have artists who were very much so in pocket with making sure that process was ensured equitably and safely and swiftly. I think that something that BOPA does well is that we already have a foothold in responding to grant situations, and we administer the Creative Baltimore Fund. We have the Emergency Relief Fund, but I think also being in tandem and in partnership with artists and organizations who have a foothold into the deep communities, into those people who are afraid to apply for these grants, into the folks who don't know how to fill out W-2s or W-9s, but collaborating with them to ensure that they first have a firsthand knowledge of what is available, and then using those relationships to get them to apply, to help them with the process. So I think it's a collaborative effort, like we did the first time. That's a way that it could happen. We're open to anything, but yeah, I think the most important thing for us at this stage is to actually get this resolution passed, and then to see next steps of how we can work together to make sure that all the people who are in dire need of these funds get the funds.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen? Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to both Councilmember Dorsey, but also all of the folks who came and testified today. So I would just say briefly, I'm going to echo some of my colleague's sentiments just around the importance of the arts. You know, I sort of hope that as we head into this revitalization, this coming out of the pandemic, that we use this as an opportunity to really rethink, reimagine how we support institutions like the arts, not just this resolution, which I think is really critically important, but generally, how do we create affordable housing for artists? How do we create educational partnerships for our artists? How do we create economic opportunities? We know that in cities across the world, what so often happens is as gentrification occurs, artists get squeezed out and get pushed out of central cities. And that, to me, would be really devastating, you know, to pick up quickly on what EZ had said about even pre-pandemic, we have artists moving out of Baltimore and into DC. To me, that is as much of a problem as any of the other major challenges that we face. We should be nurturing and supporting and revitalizing and investing in the community. So again, I just want to say not just this resolution, but in terms of our thinking, and certainly with Councilman Dorsey's leadership, that we should be making long-term, deep, structural, systemic investments in supporting the arts in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we take a vote, I just want to comment because always, you know, we talk about COVID-19, but systemic racism started way before COVID-19, especially with artists in the city and Black artists all over the country, especially in Baltimore. I truly support this. I think it's all long overdue, but I don't think we should be using COVID-19 as an excuse why we don't have more money for our artists, especially our Black artists in Baltimore, who always see this commercial on TV saying starving artists. And when you listen to some of these stories, you And when you listen to some of these stories, you, you really understand how much they're starving. So I, I just think that um us using COVID-19 as an excuse, this racism has been going on in this city for a long time, especially Black artists. So I truly, truly support this resolution, and I think it's well overdue. And um the artists in Baltimore need this. I wanted to share my sentiments with everybody. So we are going to take a vote, this committee. Is there a motion to vote on Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two zero zero two R?
Motion to move.
Motion.
Uh, motion made by Councilwoman Milton, second by, and Councilman Glover. Um, Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Glover?
Super yes.
Councilwoman Milton?
Yes.
Councilwoman, um Porter was unable to attend. She had a prior commitment, and Councilman Torrance?
Aye, Mister Chair.
Thank you. The motion passed. The resolution will be placed on second reader on Monday, March the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. First of all, before we close, I want to give a shout out to Motor House in my district. They're doing some great things until the um COVID-19 coming. When you open back up, I want to come back here, because I know you had a lot of pop-ups there. So go Motor House. Uh, thank everybody for attending the hearing. This hearing is concluded, and everybody have a great evening and be safe.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.